Ready when you are.
You had eight thirty? So this isn't, this isn't right then?
I had to get a better one. That was a nine ninety-nine special.
That's what you're telling me, huh? Good morning, everybody. This is Commissioner French. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Humboldt County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. First order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Would you join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the Civil Rights and to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Next item of business is public comment. Public comment is designated for discussion only, and the public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on this agenda. Do we have any public comment this morning? Not seeing any public comment. We're going to go ahead and move on. Approval of the minutes, item number four. It looks like we had three sets of minutes this last time. July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, February sixth, two thousand seventeen, and March sixth of two thousand seventeen. Did those of us that were there for that, did have a chance to take a look at those?
They have.
Okay, for the January seventeenth. Have a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the January seventeenth, two thousand seventeen minutes as presented.
Motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
Abstain.
Let the record show that Commissioners Hill and Haas abstained. Item would be the minutes for February sixth, two thousand seventeen. Do you have a motion on that or changes proposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the February two thousand six, two thousand seventeen minutes as presented.
Motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimous. And for the March sixth, two thousand seventeen set.
Chairman, I'd make a motion. March sixth, two thousand seventeen, meeting minutes as presented.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Any discussion on that motion or changes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. We're going to move on to item five, which is approval of expenditures for Humboldt County for January third through January eighteenth. Everybody had a chance to take a look at those expenditures? Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures for January eighteen, from January third, two thousand twenty-two to January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Have a motion on the floor. Discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any ayes? Eyes have it, unanimous. We're going to move on to item seven, proclamation supporting four chaplains Sunday. This is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a proclamation to support four chaplains Sunday, February sixth, two thousand twenty-two in Humboldt County, and for Chairman Jim French to sign the resolution. The proclamation is to commemorate the sinking of the troop ship U.S. Army Transport USAT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four U.S. Army chaplains of three faiths. They gave their life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others and stood united in prayer as the ship went down. They were Chaplain Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, and Lieutenant John P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Polling. This is something we handle on an annual basis. Are there any discussion on that item? Come on up, sir. Could be.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Paul Slayer. I'm the adjutant for American Legion Post Five, Northern Robbins Post. We've been active in Mucka for over a hundred years. The four chaplains ceremony, which is currently scheduled for two P.M. on Sunday, February sixth, that's the first Sunday in February, is to commemorate the sinking of the Dorchester. Not the sinking of it itself, but the heroism, bravery, and dedication of those four chaplains. The story will be told in full detail and recognition at our service at the Masonic Hall, two P.M. on Sunday, the sixth. We'd like to invite all of you to come and see what we do about it. And we certainly appreciate the support of the county commission and the city in doing this on an annual basis. It's supported by the four chaplains. Have a dedicated church service in Washington, D.C. There's a regular chapel that they have for it in their honor. There's a big difference between going to war where you may get shot, but you don't know, versus giving up a life jacket, knowing that the ship is sinking in icy water. There's a big difference there. And that means we need to remember and honor those who had that dedication.
Well, we thank you for your service, and this is, this came before us here a few years back, and I, we appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on it. It's important to us as well, so. We have a, we have a proclamation. Dave, could I get you to read that proclamation?
Yeah, if I can open it.
Somebody have a hard copy of the proclamation with you?
I'll get you one here. See if I can open it one more time here.
I think it's in your staff report.
Yeah, let me just. You got it right there? I do have it. So the proclamation reads, summary, a proclamation declaring February sixth, two thousand twenty-two as four chaplains Sunday in Humboldt County, Nevada, whereas February third, two thousand twenty-two will mark the seventy-ninth anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship U.S. Army Transport USAT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four U.S. Army chaplains of three faiths, who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of Chaplain Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Polling, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom, will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the United States and the world. And whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February sixth, two thousand twenty-two as four chaplains Sunday in Humboldt County, Nevada, adopted this eighteenth day of January, two thousand twenty-two by the Board of County Commissioners of Humboldt County. Jim French, Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to adopt proclamation supporting the four chaplains Sunday and to have Chairman French sign this resolution.
Have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The eyes have it, unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we actually went ahead a little bit here. Just need to go back to six, number six, the radon proclamation.
I was wondering where that went. We're going to move to item six then, proclamation declaring February two thousand twenty-two as National Radon Action Month in Humboldt County. Consideration, discussion, possible action to proclaim February two thousand twenty-two as National Radon Action Month in Humboldt County, Nevada, and for Chairman French to sign the resolution. Dave, did you have something?
I didn't put it on there. Yeah, there it is, okay.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola, for the record, the resolution on the radon, the summary proclamation declaring February two thousand twenty-two as National Radon Action Month in Humboldt County, Nevada. Whereas many Humboldt County residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers and the second leading cause of lung cancer for smokers. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, estimates twenty-one thousand people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, and lung and bronchus cancer kill more people in a year than any other cancer. And whereas radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, and home fires combined. And whereas any home in Humboldt County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four picocuries per liter of air possesses a similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level. The testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas University of Nevada Reno Extension's Nevada Radon Education Program, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the EPA support efforts to encourage all Humboldt County residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim February two thousand twenty-two as National Radon Action Month in Humboldt County, Nevada, adopted this eighteenth day of January, two thousand twenty-two by the Board of County Commissioners of Humboldt County. Jim French, Chair.
Thanks, Dave. Do we have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Chair, I'd make a motion to adopt the proclamation for National Radon Action Month of February two thousand twenty-two as rad.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item eight then, which is the, excuse me, the Comptroller Financial Report. Humboldt County Comptroller Gina Rackley will provide an overview of current conditions with respect to Humboldt County revenues, expenditures for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, July one, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, including possible impacts of the COVID- nineteen response in the county, and an update of the American Recovery Act funds. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Comptroller Gina Rackley, for the purposes of the record. We do have our quarterly report. This takes us through December thirty-first. Revenues are up slightly at one point nine-five percent over all funds, but the general fund is down just a little bit. This is mainly in property tax. That's a timing issue. Core logic, they pay for a number of mortgages, they'll pay their property taxes. We received their file this year on January third. Last year, we received it December thirty-first, so that's where the property tax difference is. And building permits are down seventy-seven percent, or two hundred and forty-nine, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is probably mainly due to, you know, last year we were issuing the building permits for the solar fields and some other large projects going on at the mine, it's the mine. So that's down pretty good. The general fund expenditures overall are up five hundred and sixty-three thousand, but you'll have to remember, last year we had coronavirus relief expenses, or sorry, they're down, general fund expenditures are down five hundred and sixty-three thousand. Last year, we had the coronavirus relief expenses. They were about one point two million dollars, and we didn't book that revenue. It was in deferred revenue. We didn't book the revenue received until March twenty-fourth, so that will even out on the next quarterly report. Overall, looking at all of the departments, they are down fifty, right at the fifty percent or below mark, so we are, we're running right where we need to be, or even better for the fiscal year. So keeping an eye on that, everything looks to be right in line, and I'll have the full report emailed out to you guys this afternoon so you can review everything in detail. I just didn't get it done on Friday in time to get it out to everybody. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great day.
Thanks, Gina.
Thanks, Gina.
Okay, we're going to move on to item nine. County clerk appointment of the Chairman of the Board of Equalization and reappointment of the board member, of a board member. This is a consideration, discussion, possible approval per requirements of NRS three sixty-one point three four zero subsection four, for the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to nominate Jim Bedart for reappointment to the Humboldt County Board of Equalization for a four-year term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and for designation of Commissioner Ron Cherry to serve as the Chairman of the County Board of Equalization. Discussion, possible action. Do we have any discussion on this item? Any motions?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we appoint Jim Bedart, Jim Bedart for four years to the Board of Equalization and to appoint Commissioner Cherry as Chairman of the County Board of Equalization.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Eyes have it, unanimous. Okay. We're going to move over item ten until ten o'clock. Let's see. We've got two items, we have two ten o'clock items. We'll go ahead and move to item twelve, which is the Public Works Department McDermott Sewer Improvement Project and Jungle Road Maintenance Agreement and general road projects in general. Morning, Don.
Good morning, Commissioners, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. So item, I believe it's item A on here, which is the, it's the agreement with Far West to proceed with the design bid-build portion of the McDermott project to get the Diamond A and residents back online. Working with Far West, they put this together, and sometimes, like with the arsenic treatment plant, we handle a little bit of the administration. We may at this time, but I wanted them to put everything in their, in their bid or their, their proposal, just because I didn't know whether we would have time to do much of it. Some of the items in the proposal may not get used. They're not sure whether they're going to need to utilize survey or that much survey for this portion of the project as well, and if they don't, that won't be, that won't be utilized, the fun, the funds for that. So this is just kind of a worst-case, what it's going to cost.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I read over the agreement, and it says like they're doing sixty percent, they cite sixty percent, ninety percent in one place. Does that mean that, that we can expect another bill when they do the rest of it?
No, that's all included in this, and that's kind of standard operating procedures. They do a sixty percent, everybody goes through the sixty percent set of plans, gives their comments, then they'll incorporate those comments, they'll give a ninety percent. Hopefully, there's a lot less comments on the ninety percent. They'll adjust, and then they go to a full set of plans. It's just, it's kind of standard. I see that everywhere.
And this is, this cost is just for the engineering alone?
Correct, yes, just for the engineering and administration of the project.
It looks like these funds may come out of the COVID money instead of the?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any additional questions on that, on that contract?
Sounds like we might be heading down that road to finishing this.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Yeah, I think everybody's ready for that, but. So basically, we have a, we have a, we need a motion with not to exceed number for this phase of the contract work.
This is Commissioner Hill. Do we have a timeline for this engineering to be done?
No. Obviously, I mean, they know the, the criticalness of this, so they're working as quickly as they can. We're hoping within the next month to be done with the design. That doesn't mean that we would be able to go out. There's still a lot of stuff in the meantime. I've been working with Harney Electric to assure that we have a design and plan in place for the, the required electric for the lift station. I still have to work with DOT, however, that should be fairly simple if, if we're doing the directional drill underneath the highway. If we're, if we're going to do a trench through there, it'll be a little bit more involved with the permitting on that, but.
So this engineering, we'll look at the three options that we looked at before. Still, are they kind of leaning towards one option?
We're leaning towards one option, and that was, and that was essentially, I brought that to you guys, what, two weeks, maybe, maybe more than two weeks ago, to kind of give me an idea which, which direction to go. And so the direction at that time was to install the lift station and get it across U.S. ninety-five and then connect.
Take care of more than one problem with potentially?
Overall, yes.
For expansion, yeah.
This would be essentially phase one. Phase two is down the road. That's something we'll kick around later.
More of a look into the future versus a patch. We're, we're looking for expansion for future versus a patch.
Exactly.
That's okay. Okay, that's all I have.
I have one more question. You know, it still leaves a bad taste in my mouth that taxpayers are going to have to pay for, pay for this. This was working for fifty, sixty years as it was until someone cut it. And now we're going to be spending six figures probably of taxpayer money that could go for something else, and I know it's not agendized, but I hope that we are looking into that and recouping, recouping some of this money. That's just a statement, I guess I had to make.
Well, that's, that's a great point, Commissioner. I think when one of the criteria that we discussed here in detail when we took over those GIDs, we, and we didn't take over them because we wanted them, we took over them because they were, wasn't anybody to step up to, on a board to administer them. But one of the things that, that we emphasized, and once the commission took this on, was that, that those general improvement districts would be responsible for those improvements and those repairs, and that the rates that they paid reflect, would reflect a, the administration, the administration of and the maintenance of a contingency fund, you know, for the purposes, and in fund balance, for the purposes of things just like this. And I would just say, for the record, to dovetail off of the comments of Commissioner Cherry, is that that's the direction I think we should be going in the future, is that we've, we've spent a huge amount of money in McDermott since we took this over. And obviously, there's been grant money involved with it, and, and good on Don for, for making this all, putting this all together, but down the road, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to be faced with making those choices similar to this one right here without benefit of a, of some sort of a, of a grant. And that's what an in-fund balance is, and I think down the road, that's one of the things that, it's not, it's never a popular thing, but it's always going to be something that's necessary, because the taxpayers in this county and the state and even the federal government with, with regard to the ARPA funds, the taxpayers shouldn't be shouldering the, the expenses of maintenance and repair of a, of a general improvement district infrastructure. That's my soapbox.
Yeah, we're just lucky we have this ARPA money. Otherwise, we would have to find the funds, and the sewer districts don't have it, and we would have to come out of the general fund to.
Yeah. Yeah.
To get it done.
And so I think that's the wake-up call, is from the board's perspective, in terms of putting together a contingency that would create a, an in-fund balance down the road for those purposes. There's the maintenance of that, and it's obvious, Don, you know better than anybody. You know, we've been, we've been chasing holes in that system and, and problems with that system long before the issue that, that developed this issue right here, but every one of those required, you know, some sort of a funding source in order to fix it, and none of them are going to be cheap. With that, any additional comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an agreement to, to, to the scope of work, a scope of work agreement with Far West Engineering in an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand, fifty-seven thousand, subject to District Attorney's Office review.
Have you had a motion on the floor? Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries unanimous. Item B is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an agreement with Highcroft Mine to continue a shared maintenance of Jungle Road pending a District Attorney's review.
Again, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. So this is something we, we've had in the past, we, it's, I think it, it's going to expire, or it just expired, and Highcroft wants to keep an agreement with us in place. So essentially, this covers, they handle a portion of the maintenance of Jungle Road roughly from the Bottle Creek intersection or the railroad track crossing out to the mine, and then we handle everything else. It's, it's worked good in the past. They help us at times, we help them at times. It's, it's just one of those things that, it needs to be done, or there's, or we would have to put a full-time crew out there just on Jungle Road, so.
Do they still have a crew working on?
Yes. Yeah, they, they contracted out to a local contractor. Yeah, they contracted out to a local contractor, or they have in the last few years.
I think I was more than a little bit surprised at this, considering, you know, the financial difficulties that Highcroft is experiencing, right?
Well, I was too, and I hit them up and said, hey, you know, with what all's going on, you guys still want to continue this? And they said, absolutely. So, they still have buses running, they still have employees out there, so they still want to continue with this.
Still committed to the operation, so...
Yep.
Well, that's good news.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's no changes in the agreement?
Not really. There's a couple little minor things. I added some verbiage that they cannot go outside the prescribed right away within the BLM agreement. We had some issues, I don't know if you guys remember, in a couple, well, the last couple of years, they went outside. Now, they're having to reclaim those areas after I met with BLM and took a ride, and they noticed it, because I typically don't go past the railroad tracks. That's their maintenance responsibility, but so, I added that. I can't remember, there, an exclusion clause for, hold harmless clause for both of us, for Highcroft and the county in there.
So what level of reclamation was the interior going to require them to do for those turnouts?
Basically, put it back to the same, the original topography, whatever they disturbed, rip it and seed it.
Really?
Yeah. And it wasn't, basically, it was just where they were turning trucks around. So, it wasn't, it wasn't digging into big slopes or anything like that. It was just turning trucks around, so... But they had them like 500 feet here, and 1,000 feet here. They had a lot more than they really needed. We typically have them like every mile for turning trucks around, and they had them less than a quarter mile apart, and wherever they found a flat spot, and they would turn around, so. So that's why I put that one statement in there, that they will stay within the prescribed limits.
Okay.
So...
Okay, so any additional questions for Don, having to do with that?
I read the, Commissioner Hill, I read the agreement. No money changes hands. Basically, it's just a designated area. We're designating, we'll handle one area, and they'll handle the other, and kind of...
Correct.
So is your impression, Don, that the level of maintenance has been up to speed this time? I mean, there was a period of time where it wasn't very good at all.
I think they've done a pretty good job. Working really well with us. You know, we supply water at one of our locations, and they've been very aware of what's going on during freezer, freezing weather. They drain the tanks, and, you know, they help us out. If there's an issue, they'll give us a call. And as far as the maintenance on that portion of the road, it's as good as any other location, or any other...
Who currently is the contractor that's handling that?
PDQ.
Okay. Any additional questions? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for the approval of an agreement with Highcroft Mine to continue the shared maintenance of Jungle Road pending the District Attorney's review.
Okay, motion on the floor? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Don, and yet, item C, which is, what are you doing?
What are we doing? Again, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. Well, we haven't been plowing snow the last couple of weeks, which is good. We have, we've tried to open up some of the roads. North Valley Road, we've opened back up, took a bunch of equipment out there, and got that back opened. There's still some pretty good piles of snow. I believe Albisu Road up in McDermott is still closed on the west side of 95. That thing had some drifts through there that we just backed off. We're just going to let it deal with itself. There's other access in there. It's really not a needed, I mean, the property owners that are around that area can still get in there, and we can still get into the sewer ponds and everything, so we just figured we'd leave it closed until it melted off itself. As far as the crews, right now, my Golconda Crew is working on adding some material to the Green Saddle Road. It's been a while since that's had some material, so it needs a little bit of rock replenished on it. The Paradise Crew has just been kind of skipping around through Paradise Ranchos and Paradise Valley, just kind of catching bad spots after the weather we had, and now they're going to start getting on to their regular schedule. And that's kind of the same for all the crews. You know, for the last couple of weeks, they've just been kind of bouncing around, just catching some bad spots. We have had a crew out on Jungle for the last week or so, working on that. It had been a while since we'd been out there, and the moisture didn't help us too much, because it was just too much moisture. As far as that goes, that's about all I have for you.
Don, did, I haven't been up there in a while, so I asked a question. Has the, is the shooting range open right now? Is the road into the regional shooting range open?
I have not been up there in a while. I would imagine, yes. It was open the whole time. It was just, it was kind of...
A couple of drifts on it, yeah.
Kind of slippery getting in there and out of there. In fact, I even...
My gut feeling is it's open, I just haven't been up there.
I even got stuck down in there. I was able to get out, but...
Yeah, well, if you're going to get stuck down in that hole, you probably shouldn't be down there.
That's, I don't know. I didn't want to make that phone call, so I made sure to get myself out. Because I would have never heard the end of that.
Probably not. Okay, thanks.
How is the hiring going? I know you needed to put some, you had some operator, greater operators hired.
So we're down four positions right now. We're interviewing, actually, I think we're down three positions. We're interviewing this Thursday, again. We had interviews, well, before Christmas, and we got one of those people on, and two of them dropped after we offered them. So, we were, we went back to the drawing board.
So the interview's for more than one position?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think I've got four open, but I can fill three, just because they were probationary when they left, so I've still got approval for those.
Were the positions that declined employment, was that based on money?
Yes.
Location, money?
Yep. Yeah, they took jobs elsewhere for more money.
Yeah.
Which we don't pay bad.
No, I didn't think so either.
But, we also don't have, we don't have the structure to, you know, if somebody's got 30 years' experience, blade and run in equipment, we don't have the structure to get them in at a higher rate, other than giving them a bunch of steps. So, and it's really hard to do that, because, you know, some of these miners, they've been doing road maintenance, so they call it, for years. However, getting them over here to do our road maintenance is a whole new learning curve. So, I have a hard time bringing them in at a higher rate than some of our other people that have learned from the ground up, and can do the job without a lot of supervision.
I agree with that. That's totally different.
Yep.
Totally different grading a road versus a mine road.
Right.
It's a learning curve.
Is there still a lot of, I guess, potential applicants turning it down because of insurance benefits versus mine?
That is one, I haven't heard that they've turned it down for that. However, that all plays in when they're looking at the compensation.
Total cost of compensation.
Yeah, when they're looking at 22 bucks an hour, and if they have a family, it's, that's a big hit.
Don, that's pretty transparent when they apply what the salary range would be, I guess, so they just, it's kind of a surprise to them when they're offered a position that maybe they thought they would be in the 30s versus the 20s. Is that kind of what's...
Yeah, it's funny how we put it out, because we put it out, you know, it goes from the low to the high.
Right.
And so, they think, well, they've got 30 years' experience, they can get the higher end.
Right.
But, like we just talked, it's really hard to put them above somebody that's been here for five years, and I can send out anywhere to do anything that we have to do, so...
Yep. No, that's fair to our current employees, to not do that.
Yeah, I think if we started doing that, I'd have to, you'd have to raise a lot of my guys up.
Yep.
Or we'd be losing them.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it'd be fair to them.
Well, hopefully, we can find some entry-level people that are wanting to go through the learning and go be a 30-year employee.
Right. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Reason I ask that question, I think, you know, I'm speaking for the sheriff in here, but I know Sheriff Allen ran into some of those same issues with recruiting replacements for the sheriff's department, and had a very difficult time picking up people with a lot of post-training, and a lot of experience on the street, coming out of southern Nevada, for instance, who wanted to get away from the big city. Hard way, hard to do that when you can't, when the structure is such that it's, you can't, you can't offer them a salary that's commensurate with their experience. And I think that, I think it's a good conversation for us to have. It's one, it's, we're going to have to have, get serious about down the road, because it's a different employment environment than we have had in my lifetime, so...
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see some different levels. You know, and I know my previous employer had that. They had different levels of workers. You know, you hire on at this level, once you get your CBL, you move up to this level, and once you learn so many pieces of equipment in your profession on them, you move up to the next level, and just keep working that way. Gives people something to look, work for, as opposed to...
Less about longevity and more about experience.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Even with that, from your previous employer, from what I'm hearing there, but they tell us they were down 12 or 14 positions.
They also start a lot lower than we do.
Oh, they...
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, from my recent conversation with them, the barista at the hospital makes more than their employees that are driving out on the roads and operating equipment. So...
Well, I think it's a, I think it's a conversation that a lot of people that are in, doing the kind of work that we're doing right now, are going to have to address. And it's reached a point of critical mass in some work programs. Sheriff's Department ran into it, I was running into it today, and you're running into it as well. And I mean, we still are faced with having to provide those services, and that's the expectation the public has, and we're going to have to put our thinking caps on in terms of how we're going to bring people into these jobs, and how we're going to retain them. Well, Don, thanks. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you all.
With that discussion, we're going to have item 13, which is, Sheriff's request to waive
the attrition policy and acceptance of a JAG grant award. And, and we'll start with item A, to approve the waiver of the county's attrition policy to hire a 911 operator position, which became available December 27th, following a dispatcher's resignation from Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Dispatch.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Yes, we are requesting the attrition waiver be waived, or the attrition policy be waived for the hiring, the background and hiring of a new dispatch, not of new dispatch position, but a new dispatcher. This has been in an existing position for some years. We're currently about four positions down in dispatch, but we have two people that are pending the final process of their background right now. So, we are in dire need to get some dispatchers in there. Our dispatchers are working overtime right now, and they are doing a phenomenal job keeping up, but we need to get them a break.
Yeah, we've been here before, and it's, this is certainly not a position that is optional within the county. This is a no-brainer. We need to, we need to get this started. Yeah. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Commissioner Hill, I would make a motion that we approve a waiver to the county's attrition policy to hire a 911 operator position for the sheriff's office.
A motion on the floor? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item B, accept justice assistance grant or a JAG grant in the amount of $40,000. Grant allows for continuation of narcotics enforcement in Humboldt County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, this is $40,000 of grant money that was awarded to the county. We want to accept that grant, get your approval to accept that grant. This is for the continuation of the narcotics enforcement, which has actually been in place since the mid-'80s, and we want to continue this viable program to help deter and detect narcotics, illegal narcotics transactions and traffickers that are occurring throughout the county.
Any discussion on that? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept justice assistance grant, the JAG, in the amount of $40,000, to allow for the continuation of narcotic enforcement in Humboldt County.
Have a motion on the floor? Discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Ayes have it, unanimous. As while we have you up here, go to item 14. Agreement with Charles, Dr. Charles Stringham for Adult Detention Physician Services. It's consideration, discussion, possible approval of an agreement between Humboldt County Political Subdivision of State in Nevada and Dr. Charles Stringham to provide physician services in the amount of $2,000 a month at the adult detention facility temporarily, until a new agreement can be completed with Humboldt County, with Humboldt General Hospital for similar services.
Okay, Mr. Chair, just briefly, is what this is, is to oversee the nurses at the jail? We do need to have a licensed physician to oversee the nurses at the jail, and is what I'd like to do is be able to table this until our next meeting, because Captain Lininger isn't able to make us, make it here today, but because this $2,000 per month, we do want to use the COVID money, one of the COVID grants or the health grants for that, and there are some other final, final things that we need to do before I feel confident bringing it to you guys. I want to make sure that that's where that money's coming from.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and, without any objection from you folks, so we'll go ahead and just table this item. And would you like to reschedule at the next regular meeting?
Yes.
Go ahead and schedule it, Rex.
Unless we need to do a special meeting on that.
You'll let us know.
We're just not ready to move forward on that, so...
I can appreciate that.
Thank you.
Good bet. Okay, item 15, Human Resources Request to Hire a Human Services Director and Deputy Public Guardian. It's consideration, possible approval to open a recruitment to hire a new position for the Human Services Director and Deputy Public Guardian. Job descriptions and corresponding salary ranges for positions were approved by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on January 3rd. It's just a continuation of the discussion we had on January 3rd. We're sitting with a position right now that's going to be vacated here very shortly for the human services. And so, at any rate, I'm going to go ahead and hand this off to county manager, and...
Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola, for the record, Abel Del Realnava is on the line here. He's going to handle from there, from his officer.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, may I make up to you a moment, please?
We have, hang on a second, Abel. Mr. Hawes?
Yes. This one that's here is going to be covered in our, the end of the month, and it's already listed in this agenda that we're going to be covering. Abel will discuss the organizational chart for the new Human Services Department. Abel will discuss the organizational chart for the new human services department. And, you know, until that gets done, and this looks to me like it's just money that we've already seen. Until that gets done and, and we're gonna rehash it later in the month anyway. Do we really need to have this discussion today?
Um, you're asking me the question. I think we're, we're looking at two different items here. Yes, we are gonna be talking about a, the organizational structure. But that's only because of the, there's going to be, there's a position gonna be vacated there. The funding sources and the, the direction of the department over the long haul. That's, that is my, that's what I envision, Commissioner, that we're gonna be looking at and have significant discussion in, in terms of what we're going to do and how we're gonna structure that, the services out of that office. With regard to the, this item today, we're looking at, at filling a position that is gonna be vacant through retirement here very shortly, but we're all, that has to be, in my view, needs to be filled. And then secondly, that the position that was, it was discussed in, in quite a bit of detail the last time around has to do with filling the shoes of, for, or the, at least the requirements that are going to be lost from the district attorney's office, having to do with the public guardianship. And that has to happen. The, the gut, the, the district attorney came forward several times. Matter of fact, came, came to us here about this time last year, talking about the problems with the public guardianship and, and the ability for the, the district attorney to keep up with that level of, of work. So we've been banding this around for better than a year. And I think, in my view, what we're trying to do here today is try to, to close the loop on that piece of that public, of that office, so to speak. And I think it's appropriate for today that we actually have this conversation. We've, we've talked about the salary range, we've talked about the need for those positions and whatnot. And I think, I would, the way I envision it today is that I think we need to move forward with this discussion and decision today and, and then put a place mark in the, with regard to the public services, social services portion of the, of our responsibility as a county and, and take a look at how we're going to, you know, how, how are we going to structure this thing and what's it look like down the road? Not just this, this fiscal cycle, but down the road. And if there is going to, if it looks like we're going to be faced with additional challenges in terms of services and whatnot, we need to have a real robust conversation on how we're gonna fund it. So. With that, Abel, do you have anything you wanted to add to this as well?
No, I think you included everything I was gonna discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically today, you know, we've done the initial work before you approved the job descriptions and compensation structure for this position. We do, as you mentioned, have a retirement in March, which is why we kind of kicked this into overdrive, is to get this established so that we can implement this new structure that we've been planning since the better part of mid 2018, together with the district attorney's office, clerk's office, six judicial district court and our office. So this, what we're asking for today is allow us to, our office to open a recruitment to begin accepting applications for this position, to fill that vacancy that's gonna happen, but not just with the current incumbent's responsibilities, but with the additional responsibilities mentioned that include the public guardianship aspect as well. So begin to ease that burden off the district attorney's office and really incorporate that in a department that's already dealing with a lot of similar things. You know, just really enhancing just those processes and really relieving that workload. And also relieving the clerk of the burden of having to be, basically, she, she's the current human services director, de facto, per code. And if, you know, this new individual, if we just hire an incumbent with similar duties as, as the current individual, then ultimately they're gonna rely on the clerk who has a midterm election coming up and who's mentioned several times that these duties and responsibilities have changed greatly from where they were before. You know, it's not just, I think you mentioned a lunch and a bus ticket anymore. It's, it's a lot more than that.
Well, I have to agree. I, I, you know, when I first started on the commission, the, our social services program was over there at the jail. And it was Anita's little bailiwick over there with a, with, if you ever, any of us were ever over there, there was piles and piles of canned goods there for, that she was collecting from the community that she was distributing as a, as our, the robust part of our social services program and which included bus tickets and, and those types of things. It's gone way past that. And I, I, much to my chagrin, I, I wish that we weren't having a conversation to help people who can't simply help themselves. And a lot of these services that we're providing right now are for children, for mentally ill. And it finally, in talking with a commissioner from Churchill County, who has a, had very, very similar conversations that we're having right now, but they had it several years back, basically said, you know, we, we weren't, we weren't providing the services we needed to provide. And I, I think the expectation is that, from the, from the public, is that we provide oversight and services where necessary. The, in many cases, if we don't provide those services, we end up providing them at the jail, or we provide them at the emergency room at the hospital, or we provide them in, and from a law enforcement perspective, in the community where problems have, have popped up. But in many cases, we're dealing with families with kids and whatnot. So one of the things that I, and I just, and then I'm gonna open this up to the floor. One of the things I would like to hear from, excuse me, from you during our retreat and during our budget cycle, is what, envision what, based on the rural county formula that is having, happening all around, at least Northern Nevada, what do you envision we're going to have to provide down the road? What, you know, looking at what we're providing now, based on the, the proposal on the table right now versus what is, you know, what is on the radar down the road? What is Churchill County seeing? You know, what is, what is Elko County seeing right now? And try to give us an idea, and that goes to Commissioner Haas's comment, is that I, I think what he's like to see is a, a robust conversation about what do we need and what do we want? And what is, what, based on the the community needs, based on documented, documented needs and, and/or the expectation from the federal government and the state, what are we gonna be required to provide?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Let me just piggyback on that. So back to the original question from Commissioner Haas. I think it was a good question. So today was really designed to, as Abel said, just kick off this recruitment. Because I think what we want to do is start with the director position. And then once we have established that individual and have them onboard, they can go out and we can begin recruiting for the second position and let them make that decision as to who that, beyond their staff. But the retreat, that's a similar discussion, but it's not around whether we should hire and move forward because we need to start that as soon as possible. But what the retreat will talk about is the organizational chart. Who will they report to? Where will they be located? How will it be different in the past? Because it'll be very different as we're talking about here, having to take on the public guardian responsibilities. And so that will be more of a discussion which I wanted you all to be a part of, as to how that should work. And that'll be a different discussion than this. Now, we can, we can certainly put it off for a week. We haven't published that until tomorrow. It just, we just lose a week because I think, in my opinion, we have to move forward with this. We have to do this. So that's my comment.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Haas. Okay, what I have in front of me right here, it's possible motion. It says, I move to approve the request to hire a new human services director and deputy guardian. Okay? We don't even have any layout for these people. True? I mean, there, there's nothing, nothing put together right now to show these people what they'd be doing.
We have the job description, which outlines the responsibilities.
Yeah, we have a org chart. We, we know how it looks.
Okay, then why is this on for, for future staff? I mean.
I don't understand the problem. I don't understand what, we have job descriptions. We know what they're gonna do. We know where they're gonna live. We have a general sense. It's gonna have, it's gonna take a, a group effort with the district attorney's office, the clerk's office, my office, Abel, to try to work through some of the details in terms of their budget, but that's really what I wanted you to participate in, was that discussion, how you foresee that happening. And, and I think we will give you the outline of what we see, but that's really, I think, a discussion for the commissioners to have. And again, we can do it all at the same time. I was just trying to buy a week, to be honest.
Another point I'll bring up, Dave, I believe, I didn't go back and look through my notes and different stuff, and we don't have minutes. But I believe that we were gonna do this at the retreat, period. Because of the amount of time it's gonna take.
Right.
And the amount of, of interest in, involved in. So in my mind, I, I can't say, okay, it's okay to go hire somebody for a job that we don't have a true description for and, and what we want to do for the future. Because this is a big thing. It's, it's been needed. It's been proven. We are losing a very good person here directly, and we're gonna have to try and fill those shoes. But we're gonna do it differently. We're gonna create a whole new realm here. So I would, personally, I'd like to see it just go to the retreat like it was supposed to go and not waste any more time on it today.
Commissioner Haas, was, was there something in the job description that didn't answer, or maybe you're, have questions about? We worked closely with the district attorney's office and the clerk's office to, to draft the job description that outlined exactly the responsibilities of that individual with respect to the deputy public guardian responsibilities, as well as human services and services provided to the community. So I'm wondering if, you know, we brought that before last time and the board approved it. Was there, was there anything that could have been added or do you have questions about?
Not at this time, but I don't have it in front of me either. You're asking me to, to approve your job description.
That was approved at the last meeting.
We did it last time.
And we were going to go to, to the retreat to make sure that all of that was polished and all of it's done.
It, it is done. It was approved at the last meeting. We have, the reason we want to also approve it is we do have a week that we have to post it internally. So make it available to staff in case anybody's interested internally. And with that, then we usually post it for two weeks or longer, depending on how many applicants we get in. So seeing as how this individual's gonna be leaving in March, we also have to assemble an interview committee, set up interviews with individuals. So this can really lead up to, or get close to the person's end date. And so we'd like to have somebody in place to at least spend maybe a week or two with that, the current incumbent, to at least get to know who the players are and the current processes. So that's why we brought this for you, why I brought this before you today, was to request that so that we can get somebody, at least the human services director, in to spend time with Nikki and the clerk and the DA's office to kind of get to know those processes sooner and hit the ground running.
I know what, what, what has changed, I'll just, I'm gonna jump in here right now. What has changed, in my view, to, to your point, Commissioner Haas, is that what changed from the notion that we're going to put, we're going to review the, the human services department, was a question of, of the, the department was in, kind of in flux at the time. What kind of? It is. And if you look back at the funding on where it came from and, and what the duties were when Nita Pekwet retired, this, that all, that had, there was a lot of changes that were, occurred by, by necessity. And what we were trying to do was to try to drive a stake in the ground and try, and try to determine exactly where this whole program was going to go and how we were gonna fund it. What has changed from that, from that conversation to right now and to last, to the last meeting, was the impending retirement of a lady that's, that's rowing the boat for the, for the program right now. And, and we're probably less than 60 days out from being, having to replace her. And, and I think it's ultimately, from a, from a historical perspective, in terms of what the work program has been and, and what has, what, you know, what is on the table when she walks out the door, that's gonna, the new person's gonna have to pick up. That's all gonna have to happen, hopefully, between her and, and the, her replacement before she leaves. And then, as pointed out by our county manager, she's gonna be looking at having to hire somebody almost from the, at the beginning, to pick up the services from the district attorney's office from the, that is going, is going to be incorporated into that position or into that department. So hence, we, when that impending retirement became apparent, immediately, we started talking about work program and, and what the job descriptions needed to be. And that was when we requested him to go back, find out what the other counties are doing, what the pay scales are, what the levels of, of responsibilities are, and bring that back to us for approval, which happened. And I, I see this today as a, an opportunity for us to start the ball rolling on a position we know we have to fill. Waiting till next week is not gonna change that at all, in my view. We have to fill that position, this initial position. We've already started the ball rolling with regard to what we have to pay and what that position is to do, that job description. And we're in a position right now to where we could fill that job. And I think ultimately, we're gonna find ourselves holding the bag down the road. And it's gonna drop right in her lap, what's gonna happen, because she did it before.
I have a question, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Hill. I think the big question for me right now, and maybe it'll answer some of Tom's questions, is, you know, how is, how is this gonna be organized and how's it gonna be managed in the end? I think, I think that's maybe the biggest concern here is how big is this animal? How big is this department? You know, I'm for this department. I'm, I'm for the need. I'm for freeing up the DA's time and the clerk's time to, to move this to a different department. But I think one of the big questions in the room right now is just how big is this animal before we start approving positions? You know, we approved two now and then we get to the retreat and figure out we need a department of 15 people. You know, maybe I'm exaggerating a bit, but you know, how big is this animal before we're, we're starting to approve these positions? I think that's really what we want to know for, what's, what's the end cost to the people for this department?
Yeah, you go on four legs here. Is he gonna become a centipede?
Right. Yeah, yeah. And I think that's, that's my biggest concern of, of approving these two positions before we actually get into the retreat and, and organize this department. And find out when we organize the department that it's way bigger than, than what we had imagined. But here, we've already approved two of the positions, so we're stuck with two positions and we've had to add all these on top of it. So I, I don't know if that addresses your concerns, but.
I think that's a really great question.
I think that's, that's kind of ultimately where we're at.
Absolutely. I think that's a really great question. And that's why, you know, when we looked at, how do we want to model our, this department? You know, from, we looked at Churchill County.
Right.
There, they have like a five, seven-person department for social services. But I believe that 90% of those individuals are grant-funded through various grants. And they, with the understanding that they know that if the money ever ran out, that they wouldn't have a job anymore. And so that's really how we've, at least in internal discussions, we've talked about the department growing because we know those budgetary concerns and constraints. You know, we're, you know, we have Rochelle and we've talked to her about it as well. This is really going to be, you know, unless there's a really good reason to hire someone and have it come out of the general fund, our approach is going to be, hey, you need to find outside funding because it's out there to add any other positions. Again, unless you have a really great reason why. Again, unless you have a really great reason why we need somebody to be paid from the general fund.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just from my standpoint, and I, I absolutely understand both Commissioner Haas and Commissioner Hill's concerns. From the standpoint of the Human Services Department, or Indigent Transient, as it was called for many, many years, there has been the need for that second person, at least part-time, for a number of years. As I noted, neither Anita nor Nikki really get time off, because they are covering those duties on call. My biggest concern on delaying, not so much the discussion on how the department will be functioning, but if we back up against Nikki's retirement, which is March 18th, we're 60 days out today, I cannot train this person. I do not have enough knowledge of the department, the skills, the duties that are now encompassed in that. I can help with the budget, I still do the budget, but everything else really lies with Nikki. Like Director Del Rio Nava said, the connections, the processes, the daily processes, those all lie with Nikki. I would not, even if I were to remain as the Director of the Department, ever, ever encourage another hire out of the general fund, as, as noted. Again, grant funding is out there, we've seen it work very successfully in the district court, given the number of employees that are there that are fully grant-funded, but one and a half to two, the Director and that one other person, I believe were sufficient for our community at this time to cover the services, and again, allow a person to have a day off once in a while when they aren't tied to their cellphone. But that's just my two cents, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
So, you know, we've, we've been talking about this a whole year now, and we've had a lot, a number of discussions about it. We approved the salary range here, I can't remember if it was a meeting ago, or two meetings ago, but just recently.
Meeting.
And the positions. Now, I think that, I'll just throw this out here, that we need this position for, for a couple of reasons, because of the increased caseloads, and Nikki's leaving, and soon. So, at least the, the Human Services Director, I think that it's, it's important that we, we start that today. And as Dave said, the second position is going to be based a lot, that Director is gonna have some say in who that second position, who would hold that second position. Maybe we could hold off on that position till later, and after that Director comes in, even the, the job description may change, maybe the Director has some, the new Director will have some ideas.
Absolutely.
So, could we just, how about just approving the, the Director today?
That's a good idea.
And then go.
The replacement for Nikki.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good strategy. And I think we actually came to that strategy through county manager's request, because he, you know, obviously felt that, and I think that's only, that's important, that whoever we hire as Nikki's replacement has the opportunity to hire that person right behind him.
Yep.
And, and, but it goes back to something that I wanna say before we open this up additionally, and Commissioner, I'll get to you in just a second, but I think, first thing on the table, in my view, is that we need to fill the position that we're vacating very quickly. Very, you know, that's, that's been a position in this county going all the way back, way before I was a county commissioner. And if we don't fill that position, we no longer provide those services, and, and that is, I think that is catastrophic. So, I think that is essential. But I do believe, in, with Commissioner Hill's comment, is that, that was kinda what I was, my conversation with Commissioner Haas, is that for the retreat side of this, I would like to know what Churchill County, what, what happened in Churchill County that required the additional, the need of additional five more people that were funded by grants? And is that, because I think that's, I think we can expect those kinds of pressures, similar pressures, to happen here down the road. We might be a few years out from that, but I, I think the writing's on the wall, that we're gonna see that down the road. So, what is it we're looking for, and how is it we're gonna fund it outside of our general fund? And I think we, if we strategically plan ahead now, so when that time comes, we can have, it's a much easier process of having that conversation. And Commissioner Haas, you had a comment you wanted to make.
This is Commissioner Haas. We approved two, two positions to be talked about, to figure out what we're gonna have them doing, and we're gonna do it in the retreat. That's what came out of the last meeting, is, in my mind. And we weren't going to just go out and hire somebody to take Nikki's place, and, and this is very much needed, okay? Now, I wanna go on record, I don't have a problem with starting another department, and getting this whole thing going like it should be, and not overburdening. But, and looking at this, you know, it says, well, we're gonna go out there, and if somebody came to me today and says, well, I hear that you have a, a job opening, what's it gonna do? I, I have no idea. And that's, that's the truth. And, and the way Commissioner Hill did state it, and you also stated the same thing, is that we're gonna go from two people to seven people.
I didn't state that.
No, but this is what could happen, okay? And this is what you're using as an example in Churchill County. I know nothing about Churchill County, I don't know any of their, their plans, or how they, they do things down there, we're taking for granted that we should go along with it, but we don't really know anything about them. This is the, the discussions that need to be done. Now, if you wanna go out and, and hire one person to, to, to go out and, and say, okay, we're gonna replace Nikki today, that's one thing. But to say we're gonna do these other two, I don't think we have time to do it, to begin with, the way it's, it's stating, and, you know, it has to be done. It's, it's a position that has to be there. I don't have a problem with that, but I want it redesigned, so that we can go on from that point, and continue, and, and do a good job of, of directing the money and stuff that's coming out of there. If we get grants, we get grants, but we don't have anything in place right now.
Though, I agree with that. We, we do have something in place, I, I would, I would point out, we, to the IAF Fund, we do have money, and we talked about that last time we were here, but, but the bottom line is, I think what you were saying, and I, and I support you on this, is that I think, just like we would a sheriff's deputy, is an essential position and whatnot, I, I think we should probably fill Nikki's replacement based on the job description that we approved last time. And then reserve the need for the, the part-time position, for when that person shows up here, actually, they've been on the ground for a while, they've, they're, they see what the need is on the ground, and actually come to us then to talk about filling that part-time position, based on the job description, as we saw it, that came out of the District Attorney's Office. That's later on down the road, that, that second position. So, today, for today, fill the position, the replacement position for Nikki in that, in that job, and then with a thought in mind, put a bookmark in it, that we're gonna talk about that, that department. What, what are we doing right now? What is the requirements of that job right now? And then, based on what other small counties have seen in the, in the state, what can we expect down the road, and how are we gonna fund those positions, and what do the triggers look like when we have to start talking about, if we have, we may not have to, but if we do, if we, if we follow suit with Churchill County, when, what did they, what did they do, and why, and how did they fund it? And I think that's for a later date, but I think Nikki's position for today. Am I wrong?
I don't have a problem with, with that. Can we do it? Is it magendocized in such a manner that we can do it?
I, I think we can, we weren't gonna, we weren't, they weren't gonna be all inclusive, we can, we can, we were gonna handle them singly anyhow, so. Am I wrong?
All right. Mike?
I think the, the board can, has authorization to hire zero to two, based on this agenda item, so.
Okay.
Okay, right.
Want a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to open recruitment to hire a new position for Human Services Director. Do I need anything else?
Okay.
That's about it.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 16, we're gonna table. We've got some other additional information we gotta provide for the next time around, so we're gonna table item 16. Item 17, BLM Sagegrass Cooperating Agency Letter, consideration, discussion, possible approval of a letter submitted by Nevada Deputy State Director Alan Shepard, requesting cooperating AGC status for humble counting regarding the re-initiation of the NEPA process for the proposal to withdraw Sagebrush focal areas. Were there any questions you guys had on that? I think you're all pretty much aware of challenges we have in front of us that changed with this administration. We requested, as you probably remember, we requested formally cooperating agency status, so that the county or its representative has, is at the table during a negotiation of this, because this is a big deal. What they intend to do, what they did the last time and didn't involve the county in, had to do with designation of lands, which were focal areas for Sagegrass habitat. The idea behind that was, anything that was identified as a Sagebrush focal area was withdrawn mineral, from a minerals perspective, and for, potentially for other uses as well, including access. And the first SFA map that came out had Winnebago right in the center of it, the entire thing, our landfill was in the middle of it, our communication sites were in the middle of it, they obviously hadn't done their homework at all, and, and a lot of the Sagegrass habitat that was, I knew of, from my, my prior life, wasn't included in it. So, it was a matter of somebody sitting there with a, a map and a, and a satellite image and going, gee, that's three feet tall, so it's gotta be Sagegrass habitat. So, any rate, they're in the process, and they, when we sued them the last time, they withdrew that map. And, and so, now with this new administration, the map's back on, they're gonna, they're renegotiating that map, and so, we said, we wanna be at the table for every one of those decisions. That's what this is about.
Okay.
How does, how does that?
Commissioner, could you move up?
How does that lawsuit that we had last time work? Does it go forward, or are we still into some control because of that decision?
We still have standing, for sure. That's a great question. We've had that question with Laura Grenier, when we re-engaged Holland and Hart, because we do have a, Judge Dew did vacate their decision on our behalf, having to do with a lot of the issues that are currently back on the table. We'll see, they're moving forward as though Judge Dew's decision doesn't have any more weight than Judge Windmill's decision out of Idaho. So, basically, where we're standing right now, and we're actually, is a request in, I, you saw the request that came in from Laura Grenier, talking about a coordination phone call we're gonna have to see where we stand on exactly that question. Right now, until we hear from her on that, my understanding is, is that we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, like this is a brand-new process, but we're gonna be at the table this time. We have standing, along with the other two counties, and, that were recognized, and we'll see where that goes, in the last lawsuit, so we'll see where that goes this point forward. But I just, I can tell you, we, we definitely need to be engaged in this from the beginning, all the way to the tail end of it again.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I, I would just have a request moving forward with this. I've been involved in this since 2014, in some way, one way or another. As we go, as we become cooperators, I would like a request that I be included in those cooperator discussions and meetings. Some legislation that was passed at the last legislature allows the whole commission, if they want to, to participate in cooperating agency meetings, without worrying about violation of open meeting law.
Right.
The legislature understood that it wasn't proper, or isn't right, for one, or even two commissioners to make decisions for the whole commission, that all the commissioners should be privy to it. Because as a cooperator, you're, you sign, you sign a paper that says, what is discussed in those meetings, will not go any further in those meetings. So, you would be in violation, if it wasn't that way, even telling the rest of the commissioners what was discussed in these meetings. And that's just not the way commissions work. I mean, it's not one commissioner, or two commissioners, making the decisions. I also think that this rewrite of the EIS Sagegrass Plan is gonna have serious ramifications to, to the ranching industry. That's another reason that I would like to be included. There were, there were, in the 2014 plan, there were a number of things that were very worrisome to the grazing industry. Table 2.6, which talked about, you know, utilization or standards out there, had some real problems with it. So, I guess that's what I'm, I'm requesting, and I think if I need to find that number, bill, the bill number for, for the, anybody, the DA or anyone, I, I can do that. That shows that more than one commissioner can participate in this, I'd be willing to do that.
Well, I, I think it's important that, and I just wrote this question down, I, I, maybe we need to research it, but I'm wondering if we ask for designation of the commission ETAL with, for cooperating agency status? My concern was, and Ron, I think you make perfect, it makes perfect sense for you to be the lead on this thing, because I, I will be involved heavily in this thing until I'm off the commission, but I, this is gonna take longer than what I have, what I have time on the commission with, so I think it's important that all of us have, have a stake in this thing, and we can all openly talk about it without violating the terms and conditions of that, and, because this, I, I don't disagree.
I guess to add a little, another note to that, the Grazing Board here, NT Grazing Board, was thinking about asking for cooperating status as a, they also are a state agency. So, I had some talk, I talked with them, Hank DeFerina is the chairman of that, and we, we talked about it, and, I mean, we don't need to duplicate anything here, and myself being on the NT Grazing Board, and also a commissioner, could fit that bill, I could, I could, I mean, represent the interests of the grazing industry as a commissioner on that board, so we, we're gonna choose not to ask for that cooperating agency, as long as I can participate to, to the commission.
Well, I think if they, if they play hardball with us, with regard to one member from the board on there, I think it should be, should be Commissioner Cherry, because he has more longevity, and, and certainly has, can represent the NT Grazing Board, as well as this, the interests of the commission. And like I said, I'm, I'm not going anywhere if we need to have some conversations after I rotate off the board, or next year, I'm, I'll be happy to come in and sit down with you.
But in the same, in the same token, you represented the commission, and were successful in helping us win in court on the SFAs, and have that to, to contribute. And so, I, I would hate to see that part drop too, because I, I wasn't part of that. You, you were pretty much the spear, they had a spear on that deal.
I think, like I said, I think this is not a real timely thing for us, you know, being, you know, with my tenure on the board, but like I said, this is important enough for the county, I'm, you know, I'm not moving anywhere, and I'd be happy to, to, to sit with any of the membership on the board, and if we're gonna talk about strategies down the road, so.
Mr. Chair, would you, I wrote down a note to myself here, that we should amend the letter, to say that all the commissioners want to participate with Commissioner Cherry and. and yourself leading that effort. And that way we encompass all of them.
That way we, all of us are talking.
I can send that back to.
And if you need to send them the, the bill number that allows for that.
That's what I'm going to do, I'm going to attach that to them.
I've been asking here to see if I can find it.
Actually, I can, I think I've got it.
I believe it's Senate Bill seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seventy-seven?
Believe so, yeah. So do we need a, do we, we need a motion on this to adopt this letter with the changes?
Where, what number are we on?
We are on seventeen.
We are on number seventeen.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we submit a letter to Nevada Deputy State Director Alan Shepard requesting cooperating agency status for Humboldt County regarding the re-initiation of the NEPA process for proposal to withdraw Sagebrush focal areas, and that all commissioners would be represented, and Commissioner Cherry and Commissioner French leading the process. Do I need to put in the DOI? I will. Sagebrush focal areas will be DOI dash BLM dash WO dash W03500 dash 2016 dash 0002 dash EIS.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the motion or clarifications? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chair, before we leave this topic, it's, this is Commissioner Haas. This is going to be an ongoing thing, not only for, for what we're discussing today on Sagegrass, but all hunting involved within Humboldt County or the North State. So, we want to keep, you know, keep on top of that also. This is one particular thing that, that we already have going, but just put some food for thought out there.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you on that. I, I, I'll just state for the record, this is, this is our spotted owl. I can't overstate that. This is our spotted owl, so. Okay. It's coming up on ten o'clock, in fact, I think it's just a little past ten o'clock. We're going to have to reset that, but, ten o'clock, we're going to go back to item eleven.
Actually, I'll be ten, Commissioner, because we've got a set two only on the ten, on item ten.
Well, I was thinking I'd handle since.
You can do them in any, because they're.
I can do it either, they're both ten o'clock, so.
Yeah, you can go either, any direction you want.
We have the parties involved in, on item eleven in here right now, so.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to move to item eleven, which is Public Hearing Resolution on Nuisance Complaint. It's consideration, discussion, and possible action per Humboldt County Code HCC eight-point-zero-four-point-zero-one-zero related to a nuisance complaint filed against property located at 7140 Jackson Road, Winnemucca, Nevada, owned by Don L. Sakarata, Assessor's Parcel Number thirteen dash zero-five-four-one-dash-one-six. Said action to include allowing the property owner more time to abate the nuisance and/or request the District Attorney's Office to take legal action against the property owner. So, we have all parties involved in here today then?
Yeah.
If you wouldn't mind, come on forward, state.
Mr. DA?
Yes.
Wendy would have me swear in anyone addressing the commission at prior public hearings. Do you want that done at this one as well?
That would be good.
If I could have you raise your right hands, please. You do solemnly swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give in the matter now pending before the commission shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. For the record, could I get you to state your names for the record?
Don L. Sakarata.
Okay.
Mark Evitz.
Okay. Sir?
Keaton Sakarata.
Okay, thank you. All right. Obviously, the action we found it necessary to take last time involved some actions on your part. Some of the, some of those requested actions occurred, some of them haven't yet. And, I think for the record right now, Dave, did you have a, could you give us a, an overview as to what is pending still then for the, for the, for the record?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola, for the record. Actually, Levi Carl is on the line, so as you recall, there were a combination of code violations and the nuisance concerns.
Right.
And so, Levi put together a memo. Levi, do you want to comment on the memo? I'm trying to pull it up right now.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure.
This is Levi Carl, for the record. So, yeah, as of January tenth, well, the two biggest issues were the Connex containers, and then the vehicle and the trailer and the road easement. And, since then, Mr. Sakarata has moved those, and I did submit some pictures for you guys to look at. Let's see. So, and actually, if I can say, so I've worked closely with Mr. Sakarata since the beginning of December. He's been really easy to work with, and he has done everything we've asked him to do. Since the Connex containers have been moved, Mr. Sakarata is actually in compliance with our office, as well as the Planning and Zoning Office. That's all I have.
Levi, this is Chairman French. Could you outline then what remains with regard to the burned-out building? Is, my understanding is that there is, we're, we're waiting for a report, engineer report as to the, Mr. Sakarata's options are with regard to that building?
Yeah, absolutely. I believe Mike Lostra with Lostra Engineering out of Elko, he did a site visit on January seventh. As of now, we have not received a letter from Lostra Engineering, but that is the last step in the process. So all we need is a letter from him stating what the, what the fix is going to be, how to repair the home or demolish the home. We're going to need a contractor involved, and we're waiting, we're really just waiting on the engineering firm to give us that information.
Did the engineering firm give you a, an approximate date that we could, we could see a report on that?
No, I have not talked to him since. I did talk to Mr. Sakarata, and he might be able to shed some light on that question.
Mr. Sakarata, have you heard from the engineering firm in, in terms of the report that's pending?
From what I know, he has submitted estimate for the design, and I signed that and sent that in to him. He will be the Class A contractor, and Jim with, JM Builders.
Yeah, JM Builders.
Yeah. It's going to, yes, Class B license, which is manufactured home.
Mm-hmm. So, what?
Those two will be working together as far as the design of the new structure, and how to proceed further with construction.
So what's your option? You're waiting for a report to determine what your options are and the, and the costs involved with that?
Absolutely.
Do you have any kind of an idea as to timelines?
We're hoping as soon as possible. Of course, you know, this was never the plan for it to go this long, but however, due to last year's COVID constraints and everything else.
Sure.
That delayed the progress of, of the rebuild of the house. And so, with everything that has transpired throughout the COVID process, with the cost of materials, things like that, we had to start over. So hence, the involvement of Mr. Lostra and the contractor as well to, to work together as far as to try and do the, the rebuild of the house. And so, as far as timelines, we don't have that at this point. We just actually retained his services. Would have been the end of last week, and we signed that documentation for the, for everything to proceed for as far as construction costs and design for the rebuild.
And you stated then that the engineers already inspected the property then?
Yes.
Okay. Did any of the commission have any additional questions with regard to, this, this has moved a long ways since the last time we were here talking about this, and I, I appreciate that fact. You're sitting here, that's a, that's a good thing as well.
This is Commissioner Hill, yeah, I just have a question. So were you indicated during the, the engineering inspection that it was a rebuildable deal, not a total loss by any means?
That's what's kind of happened there. I think you did, was it decided a total loss or?
I think Mike and Jim both determined it was a total loss.
So it potentially will be all removed and, and re, either taken down to, to dirt, bare lot again, or rebuilt, I would assume?
Probably taken down to foundation.
Okay.
And then the proceedings for new construction, we can come after that.
Who's the engineer out of Elko?
Mike Lostra?
Mike Lostra?
Lostra?
Lostra.
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 Elko engineer.
Okay, this is our concern. Obviously, the folks who were, the complaining parties who had issues with it, the property up to this time, have, have waited a long time for some sort of action to take place. And, so hence our questions to you as to what the timelines involved with this, because we don't want to see this, obviously with COVID and all the other issues out on the ground, we, we have considerations along that line, but we certainly don't want to be sitting on our hands for months at a time now. We want to, we want determination on how this is going to be handled and what's going to, your neighbors to, you know, they understand exactly, you know, what to expect.
Yeah.
I think that's fair. So, my thought is, is that with pending a, the results of this engineer report and a, your plans with what you intend to do with that report, communication back to this board, I'm, I'm thinking we could revisit this on the seventh of February or the twenty-second of February. You should hear something from them by then. If not, certainly communicate with our county manager's office or Levi, who you've been dealing with now up to this point, to find out, just, just keep the communication going so we understand what's going on. I think right now, I, what are your thoughts on it, Mark?
Yeah, Mark Evitz for the record. Commissioner French, I would, I, in my prior life in the mining, we did work with Lostra. I think a request to him from Don as to when they'll have that report, typically those engineering firms respond to that and can give him a timeframe of when that report would be available, but I would think it, it should be available by no later than something they could report out by the seventh. That's plenty of time for them to do an analysis of really what is a pretty small project, I would think for Lostra. So, I would just ask that we put some structure around the, the timeframe.
I agree.
So we can continue to move forward.
Yep, I agree. That's fair enough.
Oh, yes.
Okay. The seventh, sound good to you guys?
Yes.
Good to me.
Seventh, okay. I think right now for what we, I think we need to, this is a public hearing, we need to open this up to other additional public comment.
I just have one more question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
This is Commissioner Hill. So with the COVID, and, and I would imagine this was an insurance settlement of some sort, and I, I don't need any information, but I just want to make sure for the record that the funding is all available and secured for, for a rebuild.
Yes.
That we're not going to run into a funding issue through the process.
Okay? It's good. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Dave Mendiola, for the record. I'd like to ask District Attorney McDonald. So, if we got a report by the seventh, in order for us to republish this again, there are tremendous costs every time we do it. We've done it four times now, I think. And, so I guess what I'm asking is, can we come back on the seventh, at our meeting on the seventh, and just have a agenda item for an update about the particular report? Or do we need to go back to a full public hearing?
I, I think we can, we can indicate that it is two things. One is a continued public hearing. Anybody who was interested in, in participating in today's discussion, they had received the notice through the, the normal public hearing. We're, we are discussing here on the record, the additional date and time of the new hearing. I, I think that on the agenda, we can indicate that it's a continued public hearing. Have it as a, not, basically a standard agenda item. I don't believe that the clerk's office needs to republish, or the, or the county manager's office needs to republish relating to that.
Thank you.
So basically then, we could be at an FYI stage on this thing until we, until we either get it done, or, yeah, we lose contact with you again. And both times, either way, we can, we can then take action as support.
I, yeah, I think next, at the next meeting, we can make, take some action as to what, where you sit as it relates to the nuisance complaint, whether you believe it's being abated, or set, set deadlines, or, or, you know, firmer deadlines, or, or.
Right.
As it relates to. I don't think that we can just have it open as a, you know, we'll gather information or, or receive information as, as it comes in. I think we probably need to have a little bit of structure.
Okay.
For not only notice to the, to the public and, and Mr. Sakarata, but also for, for just moving this, this forward.
Okay, so I, my understanding is that we have, we schedule on the seventh then, another public hearing at ten o'clock to determine what, what the, the outcome of the engineers' report, what your plans are, and we're going to put timelines on, on what your plans are on the seventh, and then we'll make the decision then as to our, where the commission will move with this. I think ultimately, you know, if you're moving forward as I think you, you're planning to, with, with this structure by then, we'll be looking at an FYI at that point from Levi to make sure that we're all on board still with this thing, and, and then down the road we can wash our hands of it, one way or the other.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Sakaratas have indicated that they think it's a total loss. If that's the way the report comes back, and it is a total loss, and it will, will not be rebuildable, I would like to see them present us with a timeline of how soon it will be removed.
Yes.
I understand that once you start to build new, it's going to take some time, but I think we, I think we should know how soon that it will be removed with a timeline on that.
Yes, on the seventh. I agree. Yeah. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Okay. Anything additional? Any public comment? Ten o'clock, ten, this is a public hearing? Not hearing any additional public comment? We're going to close the public comment down. Do we have a motion on the floor about seven?
Mr. Chair, did you get the public comments? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did.
I was writing, okay, good.
Thanks, just wanted to be sure.
No public comment?
Yeah, no public comment, so do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we, that we have an item on February seventh, public hearing item, again, for the Sakarata residence at 7140 Jackson Road, owned by Don L. Sakarata, parcel number thirteen dash zero-five-four-one dash one-six. At that time, we will have definite timelines and, and knowledge of what will happen to the property and timelines of when, when the removal or repair of the home is to be done. done.
And that's for February 7th?
February 7th, yes.
Okay, we'll set that as a public hearing at 10 o'clock.
New public hearing?
Yep.
But it doesn't have to be reposted, does it? No.
No. We'll, we'll treat it as continued from today.
Okay. Any additional comments on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 7th.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next public hearing item, so that was set at 10 o'clock. This is a request for zone changes and master plan amendments. Consideration, discussion, possible approval to set the following public hearing at a timeline and date at the discretion of the staff. And this is for item, we need to go, we need to go through these individually, right? All seven of them, I think?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, we'll start with A, which is RH 2116, zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of David Cecilneck Trust to change the C Commercial zoning designation to CH Highway Commercial zoning designation on property located at East Winnebago Boulevard, I-80 interchange assessors parcel 10-0262-01. And this is a set two.
This is set two.
It's a set two.
These are all just set twos. So just, Mr. Chair, just for information, so the public, or the Regional Planning Commission met on these items this past Thursday, and all of these were approved to go forward to the board in a public hearing for final potential approval.
So would it be appropriate for us to list all seven of these items and then take one action as a board if, or?
Either way.
I'm, being the Regional Planning Commission approved them, I can't imagine.
Yes, as, as long as they're, they're all identified, the application numbers, it can be included in a single motion.
Well, I think before I do that, does any of the membership, do, do you guys have anything here that you want to peel out, any of these that you think are inappropriate, that wouldn't be included in that group?
I, I guess I just have one question. The purpose of doing this is to get these zoned more along the lines of what they're actually are instead of, they're, they're not properly zoned right now, is that the reason?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola again. So what we've been trying to do for the past couple of years is to identify areas that zoning is, say, out of character, if you will. So if you have an area that's industrial and you've got some residential right in the middle of it, we're trying to move that if, in fact, there's nothing already there to get, move that into a more appropriate zoning category. And so that's the ongoing issue on that one. So for the vast majority of now, two of those are a rezone and a master plan modification as well. So, but, and the normal process is the Regional Planning Commission takes a look at it from the standpoint of, is that a proper zoning? Is it appropriate? Are there any problems with that for future growth or development, that type of thing? And then once they, you know, the staff report, in matter of fact, in all cases here, was that these were all very appropriate and should be moved forward. So that's how the planning commission, they send it on to the county commission so that in a public hearing, you will approve those actual changes.
So, so that I understand it correctly, the majority of these zone changes were as a request from the planning commission. But the master plan amendments, were the owners requesting those changes?
Yes, through Desert Mountain Survey.
Through Desert Mountain.
The last two. Yeah, the last two.
I think what I'll, I'll do for this in, in order to, it seems to be apples and oranges involved here, so let's go ahead and, and let's, I'll list the, the first group that are in a category that are just nothing more than a house cleaning from the planning department. And then the last two, which is F and G, which were submitted on behalf of our, by Desert Mountain Survey, we'll go ahead and handle those separately. So item A is RH 2116. I think I've already mentioned that for the record. Item B is RH 2117, zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Sawtooth RV LLC to change the C Commercial zoning designation to M3 Open Land Use zoning designation on property located at 24770 North US Highway 95, Orvada, Nevada, assessors, assessors parcel 03042107. And item C, which is RH 2118, zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Sawtooth Properties LLC to change the C Commercial zoning designation to CH Highway Commercial zoning designation on property located at 24810 North US Highway 95, Orvada, Nevada, assessors parcel 03042107. Item D, which is RH 2119, zone change application submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Maxel and Teresa Williams Trust to change the C Commercial zoning designation to CH Highway Commercial zoning designation on property located off of SR 789 Golconda, Nevada, assessors parcel 08040201. And item E, which is RH 2121, patient submitted by Regional Planning Commission on behalf of Joseph D. Scott Trust to change the C Commercial zoning designation to CH Highway Commercial zoning designation on property located off of SR 789 Golconda, Nevada, assessors parcel 08061104. These items, these first five are a set two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to set two items A, B, C, D, and E as read by the chairman, the public record. And set two can be, set two date can be decided by the clerk.
Okay. A motion on the floor, discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item carries unanimous. Then we'll go to item F, which is MP 2103, master plan amendment application submitted by Desert Mountain Survey as agent for ARG Properties LLC to amend the OSMU Open Space Multiple Use Master Plan designation to COMM Commercial Master Plan Designation. Subject property is located at Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel 05048101 and No discussion on the board, open this up to public comment? No public comment, a closed public comment, back to the board. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to set to public comment, item F, which is MP-21-03, a master plan amendment application submitted by Desert Mountain Survey as an agent to ARG Properties LLC to amend the OSM Open Space Multiple Use Plan designation to commercial, to commercial master plan designation. Subject property is located Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel 05-0481-01 and 052-0482-01.
I have one request change. You read that in there, public comments, that a public hearing, you want that changed?
Oh, the public hearing, yes.
We, we, we also had item F on the, on the, on tap right now, so would you include item F as well in your motion?
Yes.
Just that too?
You mean G? I just did.
You just did G, but we, I read item F and before that, we have Mac acted on you.
Yeah, I thought you did F.
I did F.
You did F?
Mm-hmm.
I thought you read G.
They're very similar.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take your word for it then.
And I'll also include in that, at a time, at public hearing date to be set by the county clerk.
Okay. No public comment, back to the board. Any additional discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Go to item G then. Item G, I'll read into the record, our, is RH 2121, zone change application submitted by Desert Mountain Survey as agent for ARG Properties LLC to change the M3 Open Land Use zoning designation to CH Highway Commercial zoning designation. Subject property is located at Rose Creek Interchange Assessors Parcel 05048101 and Any discussion on this item?
The parcel number is the same on F and G, 05048101.
Yep, that's why I got confused the last time.
Yeah, I think, I think the first one is incorrect on the F. It's, there's an extra number in there, 052, it should be 05. I'm pretty sure. Betty, are you on the line? Could you, I, I'm pretty sure that's just the case. It was just a, an error there. Betty, I see you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you.
And I think one is the rezone application itself, and the other is the master plan amendment, but I could be wrong.
I, yeah, let me see if I can pull it up.
Pretending to the same property.
I think it'll say the same.
Yeah, one is a zone change application, same, same parcels. Is that, is, is that correct?
Hang on here.
One is a zone change and one is a master plan, but there is an extra digit in F in the second APN. I believe that's what Commissioner Haas would say too.
Okay.
And it has an extra number. I believe Commissioner Mendiola is pulling up Betty's report.
Oh, I got you, there is 052.
Let's see if she's got.
You need to find out which ones.
I think it's going to be the same thing.
You're going to amend the motion.
On this report here. Hey, Betty, if you could just come on up, that would be great. Thank you. Yeah, that's, it's on this report as well.
I don't see it.
Okay.
This number, this number is on.
Well, we're waiting for some clarification on this. Is there any comment from the public on this, on these two parcels?
I see it. I see it.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, yeah, Michelle just reported to me that that's, it's an extra two, it's, that was incorrect on the first one. That's what needs to be changed.
So we need to modify.
Probably modify that motion.
We need to modify that motion.
But what about the difference? As far as the numbers go, they're the same on both.
Yeah, one is an application for rezone, and the other is a master plan amendment.
So they would be the same.
So they're, but they're, it's two different actions on the same property. So we, we actually read into the, what's on the table right now is we read in item G. Let's go ahead and finish item G. That one's correct. I opened it up to the public. I'm back to the board, not hearing any public comment. So do we have a motion on item G?
I'll make a motion to, to set to public hearing. Zone change application request by Desert Mountain Survey as an agent for ARG Properties LLC to change from M-3 Open Land Use to zoning designation CH Highway Commercial zoning designation. Subject property is located at Rose Creek Interchange Parcels 05-0481-01 and 05-0482-01.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous. We're going to go back to item F.
I'd like to amend my motion to reflect that the parcel numbers were incorrect as, the second parcel number was incorrect on the agenda. The correct parcel numbers are 05-0481-01 and 05-0482-01.
Okay, we have an amended, amendment to the item F agenda, motion? Any additions to that, or discussion on that motion? Okay, we have public comment on that? Not hearing any public comment, back to the board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. I think we're done with that. Am I wrong?
Correct.
That was fun.
Should take us back to.
We are at the item 18, which is retreat agenda discussion. We're consideration discussion regarding the gen, agenda for the 2022 Humboldt County Commissioners Retreat. The current plan is to cover the following items during the session. I'll go ahead and just read them into the record. Justice, District Justice and District Court Room and Entry Remodel, Adjustments to Capital Projects Budget to Consider Other Projects, Grass Valley Nitrate Mitigation Master Plan, Human Services Department Organization and Management. We're going to move on to item six, discussion of new Wells Fargo Credit Card Program, over and above what we have right now, and Blackfly Mosquito Mitigation Update, and Assessors Office Changes for FYI.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola for the record, on the nuisance ordinance update, that's going to have to come at a later time. The attorney that's working with us on that has COVID right now.
I was just going to explain that.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. I just, I was just going to explain because if anybody reading along there saw that we missed one.
Yeah.
But, I think those are items that we talked about before. Is there any additional items that the board would like to see us include on the list that we may have missed? I think that's going to be a handful. Okay.
I don't know, do we need to talk about cricket, grasshopper, what we're going to do this year?
Yeah, that's outside of item seven.
That's that last seven, item seven.
Yeah.
And I do have an update for you.
Okay, so that's included in this mosquito.
Well, we should have made, we should have said that, because we're going to include all abatement stuff, bug abatement stuff, so. It's going to be, that's a pretty robust program, and I think we've got a lot of projects or a lot of proposals that we could actually weigh in on. Was Robin, was she planning on being here for that?
Yeah, I'm working on getting her here for that, yes. Although, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll get her here. She's sticking around for the rest of this year. The real magic in that, as you'll find out next week, is trying to find somebody else to, to come in early now, so that, yeah. Now, early now.
You're retiring.
Oh, you're pointing at me, weren't you? No, I'm not a bug guy.
Yeah, so, so that's the challenge. So I, but yeah, she certainly would, you know, add comment to it and things like that. But the main thing is going to be around just telling you what I've done so far. I'm working closely with Alicia Heizer on this, and.
Yeah.
We've got some ideas and plans, and we want to bounce it off of you guys and see if you have some other ideas as well.
Might not be a bad idea to maybe have Alicia or somebody from the city council involved in that as well, because they're a major partner in all this as well. And I, and we're going to have a discussion, probably for the first time ever, on, on crickets and grasshoppers. So it's part of this item, so we can, I see that, I see that department involving those down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the only other one on here that I had questioned was the contracts themselves that Commissioner Hill had brought up to make the contracts renewable in such a manner that. renewable in such a manner that they're still in place until we can get them done. And, you know, about four months early or something like that. Could you add that to it?
Yeah, as matter of fact, I actually got that on the February 7th. I was trying to keep this to just big projects. February 7th, we'll have the snow removal back and we'll show you where we've added those changes as well as the, the short-term amended contracts to get us to that point. So I'll have all that at that time.
One other thing, could you add to that same discussion on that same agenda? I'd like some more information about what our involvement with Boys and Girls Clubs is.
Okay.
I, you know, somewhere through that, when it was all put together and different stuff, I didn't pay enough attention to it. So I have some questions on that, you know, just a general.
Yeah, I could do a little historical. I can tell you it's nothing is pretty much the answer, except for we gave them a million dollars. But beyond that, there's no.
Didn't we give them something in this last budget? Is there yearly amount of money we put into Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah, they come in once a year as part of the other local grants that we consider. And so they put that in, I think for that food outlay as well, for all their COVID lunches and stuff. I think that's what they asked for. And so, but they come back every year. It's not annualized. It's not automatic in the budget. But other than that, we don't have any kind of an agreement with them or any, that I'm aware of. Do you?
I'm not aware of anything either.
But I'm happy to go back and look at historically what we did and that type of thing for you.
I was just under the impression that we were giving money to them each year to help run, run Boys and Girls.
Not to run it.
Yeah, no, just like I say, they come in and ask for five grand or something for little events or projects they're working on.
The city did that for a while. They had Boys and Girls Club run their recreation program and they got out of that.
And that wouldn't, probably wouldn't be a bad idea to make sure they weren't missing something on you, so that.
Yeah, I.
I think it's a good question, so.
I'll go back over, you know, some of the other stuff I'm questioning, but it's been a question also within, within the community. And now there's been, there's some parts of Boys and Girls Club that looks like it's gonna be rented out to public, so. I just wanted to have question or have answers to those questions, you know, that come up.
Oh, it's fair enough.
So.
Okay. Everybody squared away then on the, the list of agenda items that we'll be talking about in the retreat? Everybody squared away on the, on the dates, so.
Still.
Motion?
So if we were to think of something, can we still call?
Absolutely.
And get it added?
Well, you can, but you've got like five hours. We've got a published.
So that's a no.
That's a no. If you come something this afternoon, you know, as long as there's something I can actually pull together timely fashion, be happy to add it by 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.
The retreat's.
We're intonating that we quit thinking at the end of this meeting.
The retreat's still scheduled for next Tuesday, right?
Yeah, Tuesday. I have one question for you, though. I've currently got it slated to start at 8:30, or excuse me, 8 o'clock. Would you prefer we start our normal time, 8:30?
8:30, yeah.
Okay.
Getting in here at 8 o'clock in the summer was easier than getting in here at 8 o'clock in the winter. It's dark when I leave, but it, no big deal.
Yeah, we'll change that. If you're listening, Michelle, please change that to 8:30.
8:30. That is, we're meeting 24, 25? 24th is Monday.
It's the 25th, 26th, right?
24th. I put two days just in case we needed to go longer, but we never have in the seven years I've been here, so it'll be just the 24th.
Okay.
Monday to 24th.
Correct.
Showing up on the 25th on my calendar.
Yeah, it shows up both. I actually put them both when I send out the Calorin invites.
Yeah, it showed up on the calendar both.
We do the same thing for the budget hearing.
Right.
Just in case we need to extend it.
And we used every bit of it last.
Second day, yeah.
And that's at 8:30 on Monday.
8:30 on Monday the 24th, yes.
Got it. Okay, everybody good with that? Have a motion? Do we need a motion on that or we just agreed?
It's for information only, so.
Okay, we don't need anything then. Okay, we're go to item 19, which is miscellaneous reports and correspondence. Commissioner Hill, do you have anything?
Only thing I have is, I have Humboldt Development Authority meeting on tomorrow, on the 19th at 4:00 PM. And Paradise Valley Conservation District, February 3rd at 2:00 PM. I don't, we haven't, we didn't have any meetings in January. That I attended.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Haas. I had an airport board meeting on January 10th. We're just discussing the snow removal and how it was done this year. We have a, a new plow coming in in the spring. And went over, you know, what's gonna happen. We're pretty much at a, at a standstill until spring on doing anything out there on the grounds or anything. Had a meeting January 11th with the museum. I'm just gonna read this off of there. It's, "At 9:25 AM on Tuesday, January 4th," and this was written by our director. "I noticed a camera in the basement of the church was putting out a sparkling image. On looking closer, there was water falling from the ceiling and about two feet of standing water in the basement." And this is on St. Mary's Episcopal Church up there. So they dealt with that. Evidently, the batteries gave up on the thermostat while they were gone and turned the heater off. So it froze pipes and then when it thawed pipes, we had one heck of a mess. So we're dealing with that. The insurance companies have got it. They went back in. Anything from the floor up two feet. I don't think we're gonna lose a lot of it. They've taken everything out. They're drying it. They're doing the best they can, but the pictures and whatnot look like they're gonna be fine. The old newspapers, we may lose some of those because, you know, but they went in and volunteers and Dana went in and spent tremendous time out there trying and do something about it. And we found the shut offs. In the snow yet, but it happened. So I think we'll take steps to watch those batteries a little better, you know, and different stuff. Because if the batteries go out of your controls, they can't turn, even at home, you can't do that. If your battery goes out, that's what turns the heaters on and off. So if the batteries are dead, they can't read that and they can't tell the heater to go on, then it's done.
Go back to mercury.
Yes.
Most of those would require a low voltage wire as opposed to a battery, wouldn't they?
Most of them do.
Like the thermostat in my house picks up a low voltage.
Signal, yeah.
Circuit off of the furnace circuit and it, and I think the battery only serves as a backup if the power goes down. Maybe that's what happened there too.
I know mine at home is battery.
Just battery.
Battery. We, you know, it'll tell you that the battery's low.
It'll be dark.
It will not work if the battery's low. But anyway, that was, that was tragic. They, they worked very hard about it. We're working on a five-year plan as to what we wanna see happening at the museum, and that was about it.
Thank you.
That little church building is the one that's up there? The one that sits below there?
Right.
That they just had painted?
Yes, yes.
They've just had painted.
Tipton? I didn't have anything. Boy, that's good. It was really good. Well, I did. I had a, I had a hip training at the hospital, but.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, I had, I didn't have any really meetings, but I did participate in BLM meeting that explained the, their process going forward as scoping, scoping process and how cooperating agencies and and basically how they're gonna move forward with this. There were some questions on the, it was about a two-hour phone call Zoom meeting. And they talked about cooperating agencies, timelines. The comments had to be, have to be in by February 8th. So there's some time. There's still opportunity for others to ask for cooperating agency status if they, if they so desire. And then, of course, they'll consider that. And talked a little bit about, Commissioner Tipton asked about our lawsuit and stuff. It came up. As they move forward and write this new plan, they will have to take into consideration, you know, whatever we won. I'm not sure what that was, other than they need to go back and, and properly map these areas and do some ground truthing and make sure that the dump isn't included in the, in the SFA, you know, that kind of thing. But yeah, that's, that's all I have to report.
Socioeconomic analysis they didn't include?
No, they didn't talk about it either.
Yeah, see, that was a major portion of it too and they, and they, you know, it isn't even completed yet for Humboldt County, so. They've got a tiger by the tail and that was a major portion of it as well.
Yeah.
I didn't have anything either. I've got, well, I didn't have anything that I had to go to. I had some WIR coordination, working with them right now on the new set of Waters of the US WOTUS regulations that are pending right now. Partner of Interior. I did, I complained about the Department of Interior being kind of adrift under the Trump administration and they were, we got, we we had an open line of communication. We, I, we spoke, I actually had the Secretary of Interior's personal phone number on my cellphone at this, at one time. And that, from that standpoint, it was great, but as far as getting appointments done and handling a lot of, a lot of the day-to-day regulations, they were pretty bad about that. This outfit is that we have right now, I don't know, I think there's anybody working up there right now. It is, they don't get, they don't make phone calls. They don't return phone calls. They, they, they're terrible. So at any rate, we're working on the WOTUS regulations through them right now. Don't know what we're gonna come, what's gonna come out of that, because that's, those are pending regulations and the changes to the endangered species regulatory structure is some proposals on the table on that one as well. We're trying to get some clarification on what their regulation changes are gonna be. And then the Wild Horse and Burrow regulatory side of it, you know, another thing that I'm dealing with, with them. We have, right now, we have four openings on the Wild Horse Board. All of them reapplied for their reappointment on their, their seats. That happened in September. And we haven't heard a word from Department of Interior yet on any of it. Nothing. So we are adrift on the board right now in terms of what we're gonna do. My next series of meetings will be in Carson City, 27th, 28th, Public Land Steering Committee and NACO Board of Directors, so I'll report on that stuff when I get done with that. Let's see. Any future agenda items?
So Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola, what I have jotted down here is the first three here for February 7th. We'll bring back that Dr. Stringham agreement, maybe. I was a part of that. It's a very good chance that we're gonna re-initiate a contract with HGH. Had Robin Duckhorst on the line, the pool pack folks, Wayne Carlson was on the line and the issue is, just so you know, and I was gonna jump in when the sheriff was up, but the issue was about the HGH did not believe they had, well, their liability insurance company told them they do not have coverage for supporting those nurses at the detention facility, so they needed a cease and desist. We believed all along that we did. We had it through the pool. So we did get Wayne Carlson on the line. He confirmed that we do have a million dollars worth of liability coverage for any physician. Doesn't have to be, you know, it could be the county health officer, could be an HGH designee. So they were happy to hear that. I think they were fine, but there were some other issues within the contract that they wanted to address while they had the opportunity. So they're working on that right now. So maybe what we'll actually bring back is, is a renewed contract with HGH to provide that. Dr. Stringham was just kind enough to say, "I'll do it. I don't really have the bandwidth, but I'll do it to help you out for the time being," so. Also, on February 7th, we talked about all the, the public hearing continuance for 7140 Jackson. And then we had quite a few others, you know, on all the, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it by February 7th for the zone changes, master plan change that we just went through. That'll probably be second meeting in February. And then also, I will put something about the Boys and Girls Club involvement. We'll have, I'll get some background, some information. Maybe even have Chad come in and talk a little bit about where they're at, and that might be a good opportunity to give you an update. And then the other two were just change the time of the eight, the meeting next week to 8:30 versus 8:00. That's what I have at this point in time. And then we will bring back those contracts for snow removal and the others with the new amendment.
There was one that we took off here with Alliance or.
Right.
If that comes back on, would you have a decent background and tell us about what, I mean, I looked it up. I looked, you know, everything up I could on the thing and the way it was written. You know, what's a, what's a desktop? They're not being specific. Are they computers? Are they copiers? You know, who's doing our copying now? Who do we pay to do, or to, who do we get the copiers from that we pay?
Yeah, and my, that's my fault on that. So we did not put anything attached to the agenda because we knew we were gonna table it several days before. There was just some information that we didn't have.
I stayed up till 2:00 this morning. You couldn't look in all of this, couldn't sleep.
Well, you should have done is you should have called me, so you could have gotten me out of it.
You were gone. You had a three-day week.
No, I was here in the office on Monday, so. Anyway, yeah, that's, so what we've got, Alliance Imaging is out of Elkhwood. It's Reese Keener. And we've had a contract with them a little over three years. That thing expired a while back, but again, because of COVID and because of a we were really concerned about the number of printers we have. I think the total number is 93 total that we have in the county, which is kinda crazy. It's on like one for every two people, just about. And so we did a big deep dive, Technology Services did. Tim Tenagan put many, many, many hours into it, just trying to identify where they were at, why they were being used the way we are, with the goal of trying to reduce that number significantly. So we did all the work, but there was still some questions about whether or not the, the agreement that we had with Alliance really was to our advantage during that three-year period. Did we really reduce costs? And so Gina did some, looked at some numbers that didn't kind of match up with what Alliance was claiming. So we got a meeting with them this Thursday and we're gonna go through all that data and they're gonna provide us, they've got two update reports that we need from them. So hopefully out of that, we'll have a better understanding of whether we really need to come to you and say, "Yeah, we should do this," or maybe we've got a question and say, "Maybe we need to try something different." That's what we weren't concerned, we weren't concerned about.
Okay, any, any additional items you'd like to see on future agenda? Right now, okay. Okay, that, we'll go move on then to item 21, which is public comment. We have any additional public comment?
Good news. You might have saw this, Able Darrell, my Assistant County Manager, HR Director, for purposes of the record, you might have saw this in my staff report, but I did wanna come before the board and let you know formally that on the 13th of this month, the Supreme Court blocked the OSHA emergency standard for vaccine mandates or testing and vaccine mandates. So since Nevada has a state plan, it could be a possibility that the state decides to pursue this action, but Governor Steve Cisalak says he's not interested in implementing a vaccine mandate that encourages people to get vaccinated. So some good news, some welcome news.
Good, good. Okay, any additional public comment? Not hearing additional public comment. This meeting is adjourned. Not hearing additional public comment, this meeting is adjourned.
We got a land fund meeting this week? Sometime this week.
Yeah, there was a.
20th, yes.
Sometime this week.
20th. Come on, Commissioner.